I'd like to call to order the zoning board of appeals meeting for January twenty fifth, two thousand and twenty-three. Let's begin by doing attendance. I'm Steve Antonio. I am here. Josh Mickelson. Joanne. He isn't here. Joanne Hogan.
Present.
Larry Boardman.
Here.
Mark Freeman.
Here.
And Ram Kaza.
I'm here.
All right, that establishes the forum. So let's get right into it with our first application. Number twenty-two dash twelve, Michael Caldwell, owner applicant for variance pursuant to the Simsbury zoning regulations, section three point nine for the construction of approximately twenty-seven square foot hatchway and it's plus or minus two feet within the rear yard setback of the property located at eleven Vicford Street. Michael, will you be presenting or will Don be presenting on your behalf?
Ah, we're both gonna speak a little bit.
Take it away. Whenever you're ready, please give us an overview.
So my name is Michael Caldwell and I live at eleven Vicford Street in Simsbury and I've lived here in this house for twenty-five years. Live here now with my wife and my three-year-old son. And as you know, we're planning an addition onto the house. And you know, a little bit of history with it. It's been three years in the making. It's been a long process and with my architect, Don Terranova, who's on the phone with us tonight as well. And some of the challenges, you know, for those of you that have been able to see the drawings, it's an odd-shaped lot. For one thing, it's, you know, it's not square, it's not rectangular, it's kind of on the curvature on the road. And so that presents the challenges as far as setbacks and offsets from the road. And it's a small lot in and of itself and you know, so and you know, Don and I have gone through and Don will explain this a little bit as well, but several renditions and corrections, you know, with the planned addition to try to be compliant and to try to, to be honest, to avoid a variance. And in many cases, we were able to do so through corrections and Don's thoughts and so on and sizing and so on and so forth. So but the one thing, you know, that we ran into is the hatchway and as, you know, most of you know, a hatchway protrudes, you know, from a house, you know, five, six feet. And in this particular case, it's has created a variance of two feet. So, you know, we tried to, you know, make it compliant in many, many different ways through sizing, like I said, and it just presents some challenges and it took us three years to get to this point. And you know, this is kind of where we're at with it. So again, it's about, I think roughly two, two feet, twenty-seven square feet that sticks out. You know, if you look at the drawings in terms of the setbacks and whatnot, it's not not really another place to put it. And wherever we may move it to, it's going to create a variance in and of itself. So so that's kind of where we're at with it. I currently have a hatchway on the house, so it's not adding an additional convenience or whatnot, however you may call it. It's just replacing what's there. So I don't know, you know, you want to add to that, Don, a little bit to start with and or I missed anything?
I just, well, first of all, I'd say that it's like December of two thousand and twenty. I drove up and the first thing I thought was, this is the smallest house I've ever seen. And it's not a micro house, but it's, it's like twenty-four by twenty-six.
Eight hundred and twenty square feet.
So it's, it's very small. And then when we had this, this is a, let's see. We were using that for a survey. It was done by a surveyor, but it was a boundary map. And Michael had that done for a retaining wall. And the house is currently like eighty percent non-compliant. That's not mathematically, that's just looking at it. It's irregular. His program was just to make it bigger, add a master suite, extra bathroom and more living space. And to update the house, so it would have things like laundry, not in the basement and a mudroom entry room. And the entry, all the entries were non-compliant. So we kind of assumed that we were going to be stuck with a variance, but we tried. I'm just gonna leaf through really quickly. Originally, this is actually a two-story variation. We did a charrette. I had a guy working with me. This is the one-story one. The two-story one just was not workable. And then we got to some things like this. Michael actually was very patient and he would wait till I had time. And then I would do things, a lot of these things were sketchy like this, because once we had a a basic exterior, we could add or subtract it and just do sketches. So and Michael actually come up with a list of like five or six things to look at. And so that was part of the reason why it was a long process. But we kept trying to get towards the no variance. And we finally got there. And then we had to get a survey, which took a very long time. And then, of course, the survey was slightly different. And then we had to give the plans a bit of a haircut to accommodate the overhangs. And then we realized that there's just nowhere to put the hatchway without it sticking out. I tried to talk Mike, went to tacking it on to the side of the house is the frame thing. It looked like a phone booth off the back. And we kind of looked at each other and said, you know, we've been through every possible scheme. And let's just go for a variance. So this is about as little of a variance as you could possibly ask for. The hatchway on my house I measured, it's like fifteen inch high where this place, so that's the maximum impact, like five feet by two feet by less than two feet tall. And we just don't see anywhere else to put it. And that's that's where we're at. So we'd like to get that because I like to add, Michael, he has no room for a garage. He needs the basement because he has, he has a home-based business and he needs that for storage. And part of the reason for this whole thing is to actually have a good basement.
Right. Added room and for those purposes, like I said, I have a three-year-old and, you know, bicycles, kayak, the home and that sort of thing. And I currently have a hatchway, which is in disrepair. So but you know, to provide access for this, for those things and you know, down the road, you know, obviously, I don't have any plans for, but if I were to sell the home, you know, I would say having a hatchway would be of the benefit and would be expected. Most of the houses around here have them. So so that, that's kind of where we're at. It's been a long process, three years of trying to make it so that didn't have any variance and we came close so many times and actually like Don said, thought we had it there and then got a more complete A two survey and you know, and when we put all the things together and they meshed, you know, this, this is kind of what we ended up with. And I said, you know, it's it's been such an exhaustive process. Like, you know, at this point, let's, let's just do the variance. I'd like to start it in the spring. So.
So you did hit on the most obvious one at all, which is the safety factor. It's the second form of egress in the nature of a fire. That actually trumps everything you came up with.
It really does. That was what I was thinking too. You have to have a safe exit.
Well, that's what I was wondering too. And some people had told me that. And so I'm not really sure if that's the case, but I not even want to say that because it wasn't a hundred percent sure, but.
It's not mandatory. However, it is greatly favored. If it was a commercial structure, is one of the second egress is mandatory.
It makes sense, especially.
Part of the living space. That being said, they make Bilco covers, which is the, you know, the original manufacturer of those basement hatchways. They make Bilco covers that are vertical in nature. I was just wondering if you had considered that by chance? Now, is that it? Fill that in?
I'm a little familiar, you know, with my business and so on. I I've seen many, many different, I run a pest control business and we're in and out of basements all the time and hatchways and this and that. And actually, to your point, you know, I've found a hatchway that I like over and above the Bilco and I think it's better in terms of energy efficiency rodents. And that's the clam hatchway. It's actually a composite hatchway made out of Rhode Island, which Don had specifically gotten those dimensions because I told him this was the one that I was interested in. And it's, it's actually more low profile, but aesthetically better looking. But I wanted it for the energy efficiency purposes. And I think it looks better. And so to answer your question, Steve, it's, that's kind of the one other than a Bilco that I'd looked at and wanted to go with for a variety of reasons. It's got gas shocks on, it's got weather stripping, it's, it's better, it's safer from the inside in terms of access and so on. So I don't know if that answers your question, but that's kind of where I had my.
Man, they don't offer a, a vertical version?
Not really. No, no, it's, I don't know. Don had the dimensions on. I don't know relative to a Bilco, it's probably comparable that way, but I don't.
The height is thirty-one inches.
Yeah.
The outside framing. Okay. I've never seen them. So thank you for.
Yeah, it's, if you Google it, it's a pretty interesting thing. I often wonder why it hasn't taken off more than it has. A few times I've seen it, they're very well done, they're more efficient, they're safer, you can get custom colors. They don't rust. So they're, they're pretty slick.
Also, what I was talking about with the phone booth, like that wouldn't have been a manufactured one, but I was thinking a carpenter could build something like on old houses on the back. And we both felt that we put so much effort into making outside kind of aesthetically pleasing and all blending together, that this would just sort of stick out like a bad bad thumb and it would block windows. And so we decided not to do that.
Okay. Do any other commissioners have any questions to ask the applicant for clarification or other other ideas that they'd like to present?
No, not really. I was just, I was just gonna say if that's the only exit from the basement other than the exit into the house, there has to be some kind of, in my mind, a hatchway there. So I don't think there's any choice with.
Especially, I think it from doubling the size of the house. And I would think more so too. And it may play more into the safety if I ever finish portion of the basement. I would think that would lend itself more to, hey, you gotta have access maybe from an insurance standpoint or anything along those lines. I'm not sure, but it would make sense to me.
It's certainly, it's certainly an improvement to have it. I, I've lived in a house without a hatchway at one point and it was, there were a lot of inconveniences with it and also safety issues. So I think there's, there's a need for it.
Okay. Does anyone else have any questions of the applicant?
Well, it certainly seems you've done your due diligence. I mean, you've looked at a lot of options and that's the critical part.
Yeah, I, I'm very particular. It's my background upbringing and Don, Don did tell me I was the toughest customer. So I take that as a compliment, I guess.
Okay. Well, seeing.
Yeah, I think it's kind of, it's kind of, it's a simple question here.
Okay. So seeing no other queries by the board, I'd like to close the application, make a motion. I need someone to second it, I believe. All right. So that closes it. We don't need to vote. So from here, Michael and Don, we're going to deliberate amongst ourselves. We appreciate your presentation. I think we've got everything we need from you, but we are not able to speak with you directly. So just stand by because we're going to move into the next session of our meeting and deliberate and possibly vote. With that being said, I will start the deliberation myself. I think it's minimally invasive, invasive. I think they try to stay within the constraints of the building envelope. And I believe the actual variance is plus or minus two feet with the project. I think it's, it's an insignificant, if you will, enhancement that is necessary for safety reasons. I also don't see anywhere else on the site plan, they could put that hatchway, which would yield less of a deviation from what is allowed.
Yeah. I actually think that the low one is less invasive looking than the vertical, even though the vertical would come closer to the house. It would be this big thing against the house. So I think the low profile one is, it's easier to disguise it and the neighbors certainly aren't going to see it.
Would any other commissioners like to weigh in?
Yeah, I, I agree. I, I think that it's, it's the best option. I'm moving into a house without access to the basement and I really wish, I really wish there was access. So I think it'll serve him well. And, and again, I think it's minimal. He's not asking for a lot here. Like Steve said, plus or minus two feet. So not going to affect the neighbors, you know, I, yeah, I, I feel like it's, it seems like a no-brainer.
Okay, Rob?
Yeah, I agree too. I have a hatchback in my house, so it's really useful, you know, getting in and out.
Well, we have to speak to the, the deviation. We all agree it's useful, but we've got to, you know, base this on need and, you know, and allowance for a variance. We need a need for the variance. That being said, Josh, what do you have? Your opinions or questions or statements?
I really don't have much to add that hasn't been said already. It's a minimally invasive safety feature on an irregular law. I think that's all that needs to be said about it.
Okay, Laura, just to verify, we've had no public input on this application?
There were actually two letters that should have been submitted into your packet in favor of the variance from neighbors.
Bear with me one second. I apologize that I didn't catch them.
They did come a little bit later. They weren't with the original submission.
Believe I dropped them off.
Two days ago?
Monday. I have, well, I have them here.
It's okay. We just need to know that they're in favor and not opposed.
Okay, sure.
Not to truncate it, but really that's, that's the onus of what we're looking for. Laura, did you print out the the description of variance? And do you want to discuss what the actual hardship we will state is? Jo, I meant Joanne. I'm sorry.
Oh, you want me to make a motion?
Yeah, but you need to state the hardship. So let's just talk about that real quick before you.
So I would think it's the, the situation with an irregular, largely non-conforming lot as it is that the, the, the odd shape of it makes it hard to avoid the setbacks.
All right. So go ahead and.
Is that okay? All right. I'd like to make a motion to approve application twenty-two dash twelve, Michael Caldwell, owner applicant for a variance pursuant to the Simsbury zoning regulations, section three point nine for the construction of an approximately twenty-seven square foot hatchway, plus or minus two feet within the rear yard setback in accordance with the plans entitled zoning location survey pre-survey by North Star Surveying and Engineering LLC dated seven two twenty-seven to two thousand and twenty-two at the property located at eleven Vicford Street. Assessors map F eleven, block one oh five, lot zero one six, zoned R fifteen. This approval is subject to the following conditions. Administrative zoning permit is to be obtained. The hardship stated is the irregularly shaped lot with a already non-conforming property and no other options for this two-foot variance.
Which allows emergency access.
Which allows emergency access from the dwelling.
All right. Someone like, all right, thank you very much. All those in favor, I.
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 And Larry, we, I didn't hear Larry Boardman's vote. Larry? Did you, are you there? Larry will just hold off. I hear none opposed and no one abstaining, but I did not verbally hear Larry Boardman last call. All right, Larry has hit technical difficulties. However, we have a vast majority. So let's just say it passes. Is that good, Laura? I, I okay. So thank you very much, Michael and Don. We appreciate your time and efforts and congratulations. I, you know, I'm sure I wish you only the best with your addition.
Thank you very much, everyone.
Great.
Thank you very much for your help and look forward to passing along the building committee and appreciate all your input.
Sure. Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night. So continuing on, we have some general commission business. That is, did you all receive your letter inviting you to participate in two different things you can participate in? Now, as ZBA board members, we are required to have four hours of training every year? Or Laura, is it every year or every other year?
I knew you were gonna ask me this. I normally know this. I believe it's every year.
I, I know.
The email said every year.
I believe it's every year.
Yeah. Well, I know we all need to do it this year, but I think if your term extends to next year, next year you're exempt. It's a nuance to the law. However, with that being said, we all have to do four hours of training. There are two options at this time. The first one is to do the, the long all-day Saturday the Connecticut Board One, the land use law for municipal land use agencies. It's on Saturday, March eleventh. That one's the most relevant to us. They actually have a breakout session that is just for zoning board of appeals. As I mentioned, your minimum exposure is four hours. However, this runs from nine AM to four thirty PM. It is online, the agenda. I strongly urge you to decide what you're going to participate in before attending this. And that way you don't have to be there for the full Zoom meeting. I also want to reiterate, both of the options are Zoom meetings. That's options number one. You can do a meritage too, if you want to. For some reason, you could do two hours of this. You can do two hours or the full four hours over three different meetings. What is it? UConn, Laura?
UConn Clear is doing a presentation over three different days. I believe they're an hour and a half each of, and they touch on different topics. So each meeting should be different.
I signed up for that one because I can't do a Saturday thing. So.
Yeah, it's a tough one. Nine to four thirty PM.
I can't do, I can't do a Saturday. My Saturdays are jam-packed like.
I didn't receive, somehow I didn't receive that email. Laura, can you please send it to me? I would do the Saturday one.
Well, we'll send them both. And I just want to reiterate, reiterate. Sorry, I'm slowing down. It's me slowing. Anyways, I want to reiterate, you can do a meritage of the two. You can do a couple hours of one or two and a half hours of the all-day Saturday one, which would not be all day Saturday, and an hour and a half and just do one. Scope them out, see what interests you. If you do by chance do the Saturday one, I strongly urge you to do the part that says zoning board of appeals because pertinent to us. The UConn one is free. However, our planning board, our planning office will register you for it. The other one is, there is a fee. However, the town will pay for us to go to that all-day Saturday one. Again, just to reiterate, you are not committing to being there the nine thirty AM to four thirty PM time slot. You just have to be there for some of it to check in and check out. Are there any questions?
I think I signed up for the Thursday night ones, but I didn't receive, like I went on to the website and clicked yes and put my info in. But I haven't really received anything from them. So is there any way?
So you went directly through Clear or?
I went to the link, I went to the link that was on the email.
Okay.
That he included on the email.
Let me check with Joe Hollis because I know he has been kind of tallying up who's attending what. Okay. So make sure that he's aware of it and make sure I have some final counts, but I will get back to you on that.
And that because I'm assuming they'll send a link for the, well, maybe that was on the email, the link for, no, it wasn't. I'm assuming he'll get, I'll get a link for the Zoom meetings before each session. If I'm actually signed up for it. So yeah, if you could confirm that, Laura, that would be.
So you want to confirm because I'm pretty sure they sent me one by email.
Okay, I'll double check it, but I don't think I got anything. You signed up for the Thursday one, Stephen? The evening one?
I gotta be honest, I'm gonna do both.
Okay.
However, I will be.
You like an overachiever or something or what?
Yeah, basically, I assume that I'll be getting some form of PIN or SASH. I would like a SASH.
I think a SASH. SASH.
And just for clarification, because I have the packet in front of me, the ZBA aspect of the all-day one, which is taught by the lawyers, it really centers on the law, is from eleven twenty AM to about eleven fifty AM. So
No, that's not long.
The other ones are Thursday nights though, which for me was a great time slot.
Yeah, that works for me.
For easy and.
Yeah.
Both are Zoom. So it's as painless as possible. However, they do need to know which one you're going to do and you do need to do it if you're going to maintain your seat.
Yeah.
Or to communicate with Joe. Joe's the one that's taking care of it. Is there any other general commission business? There is one other. It's the P O C D. We're all meeting, not we, but the planning department will be meeting with the general public regarding the P O C D. Does everyone know what the P O C D is? Plan and development. It's basically the long-term plan for the development of our community. You're welcome to go down to the junior high school on January thirtieth. Laura, what time is it?
It just hitting me up tonight, Stephen. I think it's seven o'clock. I think it's seven. There's signs around town. There are signs around town. It's seven o'clock. You can look at the signs and I can send a reminder to everybody if you're interested in attending. It is an in-person meeting.
It's Henry James.
Henry James.
Yeah.
Unless you meant central time and it's not.
No, Central School.
What are we talking about here?
So January thirtieth, seven PM at Henry James. It is not a meeting. It is an open house. You can be late. You just walk up, you give them your two cents, you scope out the plan and then you can leave. It's not a hardcore meeting that you're stuck there and people are doing roll calls. So if you have the time, it's great to give your input because it's our community. So, so, so that was it for general commission business. The minutes for, let me just verify which minutes they are, December twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-two. I did go over them. I did not see any irregularities whatsoever. Did anyone else?
Yeah, I did. Yeah, I did.
And you're in favor of them?
Yes.
Do you want to maybe make the motion, Rob?
This is the first time I can make motion to approve meeting minutes from December twenty-first, twenty twenty-two.
And would someone like to second that?
Second.
All those in favor, I. Anyone abstaining?
I wasn't there.
And no, we left to vote against, so the minutes pass. With that being said, I didn't mean to cut general commission business off. Did anyone else have anything else before we moved to adjournment? I have one last thing. Laura, do we, sorry, Laura, do we have the list of dates for two thousand and twenty-three of our meetings yet?
You already.
I don't remember voting on them, but.
We did in November, I think.
In November, correct.
Yeah.
Okay.
But I'd be happy to provide you a copy.
We discussed the idea of not planning, like not having one in. If we have to have one in November, not doing it the week of Thanksgiving. Remember that conversation?
That's right. Now I remember.
And try to do it the week before Thanksgiving instead of that Wednesday.
Yeah, now I remember.
Okay.
Okay.
So it's always, basically they're all the fourth Wednesday unless we
Except November.
November one. Yeah.
Okay, great. Does someone want to make that final motion? Or I can.
I made a motion.
Make a motion. All right, there you go.
A second.
All those in favor?
I.
I.